The meeting of the August 10, 2017, of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Mr. Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Friling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
First on the agenda are council minutes from July 10 and July 13, 2017. Are there any additions, corrections?
We approve the minutes.
Second?
Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
And we have no matters of special privilege today. That takes us right to public hearings, of which we have one. It is the zoning text change adding Section 21-623 to Chapter 21, Article 4, Supplemental District Regulations for Duplex Dwellings, Proposed Ordinance 17-15 and Proposed Ordinance 17-15A. And maybe that should be or proposed?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Or Proposed Ordinance 17-15A.
And I'll be handling the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When should I do my disclosure?
Go ahead.
And I have a disclosure. I own one property which is affected by the zoning amendment proposed to permit a special exemption for existing duplex dwellings. And there are 40 properties affected by the proposal pursuant to Section 2.2-3122 of the Code of Virginia. I am permitted to participate in the discussion and vote, notwithstanding that interest. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you, Ms. Shelton, for providing the word.
Mayor, members of council, several members of council asked staff to look at the issue of non-conforming duplex dwellings in the city and to provide to them whether or not it was possible to amend the law to allow non-conforming duplexes, which had been in use for decades, to continue to exist in some way, notwithstanding the owner's ability to demonstrate that the property is legally non-conforming. And to do that in a way that doesn't expand the existence of duplex dwellings in the city's single-family neighborhoods. And so what you have before you is an ordinance that does that. Let me back up for just a minute and explain what a non-conforming use is and what a legal non-conforming use is. When someone is permitted under the zoning ordinance to engage in a use of a property and that zoning ordinance is subsequently amended so that use is no longer allowed, the use that was previously allowed is allowed to continue so long as that use continues without a period of interruption for more than two years. So in this instance, in 1966, the zoning ordinance was amended to prohibit duplex dwellings in single-family neighborhoods. And since that time, they have not been permitted. There are a number of duplex dwellings in city neighborhoods. The staff has identified 47 duplexes. Of those 47 duplexes, seven have provided evidence to the zoning administrator that they have a legal, non-conforming use. So they existed prior to 1966 and have been used as duplexes since that time without a break of a period of more than two years. Those duplexes and any duplex that has a legal, non-conforming use right are what is sometimes referred to as vested, that right is vested, and that use can continue, notwithstanding any action of the city council, so long as there is, that use continues without a break for two, more than two years. So of the remaining 40, the staff feels like the city's records are not adequate to determine whether or not those structures were constructed as duplexes, or if they weren't constructed as duplexes, when the structures were converted to duplexes, and how they have been used subsequently since that time. The burden of proof for illegal, non-conforming use is on the property owner, however, not on the city of Williamsburg. That is state law. That is not city code. It is a very high burden for someone to be able to prove more than 50 years of records, 50 years of that property being used consistently as a duplex without that break of time. There are two ways for city council to allow duplexes that are not legally, non-conforming to continue. One is to amend the zoning ordinance to allow duplex dwellings as a matter of right. If you do that, however, houses that were built after 1966 that were not duplexes would be able to then convert to duplexes as a matter of right. And that expands this beyond what I believe council was looking at when they asked the question. And so that is not staff's recommendation. The other alternative that staff proposes to council would be to allow the continued use of existing duplexes as a special exception under the conditions provided in the ordinance. That would be for long-existing duplexes that, but not creating duplexes as a new use or allowing recently converted duplexes to use as a special exception. The property, so we've provided for this ordinance, and I'm going to go through the provisions of the ordinance. The duplex has to have been used as a duplex since January 1 of 2004. That date is from when we began the rental inspection program. So the use has to have been in existence in 2004 and have continued since that time. The specialist exception is available only to subsequent purchasers. So if you created the non-conformity, if you converted a house from a single-family house to a duplex in 1980, you would not be able to take advantage of the special exception. The special exception also provides that, we're going to set a date, September 1 of 2017, to determine whether or not a subsequent owner is allowed to take advantage of the special exception. So if you are the person who converted your house into a duplex in 1980 and you still own the property as of September 1 of 2017, but next year you sell that property to someone else, that subsequent purchaser would not be able to take advantage of the special exception because it is the property ownership as of September 1, 2017. The qualification also provides that there needs to have not been, that there needs to be a history of compliance with city regulations and laws. And so by that, we mean the building code, the fire code, the noise ordinance, the nuisance ordinance, and the zoning ordinance. The original version that went before the planning commission simply stated that the Board of Zoning Appeals should consider whether there were three or more violations of those provisions of the code over a four-year period of time. After a planning commission meeting, staff thought that should be clarified. And so the language that you have in 1714A, which is the version, the correct, 15A, which is the corrected version, says that Board of Zoning Appeals should look at the history of code compliance, that three or more violations over the course of four years is considered a significant number of violations. But if the property owner has corrected those violations in conformity with the notice of violation that they received, then the Board of Zoning Appeals can still grant the special exception. So if the property owner meets those qualifications, the property owner would be eligible for the special exception. The language regarding the code violation is specifically in there to address the requirement that the Board of Zoning Appeals look at the impact of the special exception on the adjacent properties and surrounding neighborhoods. And so we are focusing the BZAs inquiry into that. And it only applies to complaints, confirmed complaints, founded complaints that were received by city staff. The special exception will run with the property. So if the property is subsequently conveyed to a subsequent owner, the special exception will continue. If the property ceases to be used as a duplex for two or more years, the special exception will cease at that point, which makes it consistent with the existing state law regarding legal, non-conforming uses. The Board of Zoning Appeals in this ordinance may, it says may, and not shall revoke a special exception if there are three or more violations of the city code over a one-year period of time, measuring from the most recent violation back for a year. If city council desires to make the special exception process available for duplex dwelling owners, then city council, the staff recommendation to city council is that city council adopt Proposed Ordinance Number 17-15A.
Is that all?
Uh huh. Happy to take any questions.
I have a question to start off. Could you just clarify, what is the distinction between a special exception that conveys to the subsequent purchaser and what is one that does not?
The special exception, it depends on how city council drafts the ordinance. Some special exceptions are specific to the property owner. So rooms to rumors, those are specific to property owners. This one will convey if the property is conveyed.
Okay. So there's not a situation where this would be granted and then the property subsequently sold and the purchaser then does not have the ability to?
It is specifically provided in the ordinance that it will convey with the property.
Okay. That's very helpful. Other questions? And we'll do the public hearing after.
I thought you said something, though, about 1980.
That was just an example.
Oh, okay. Okay.
You mentioned complaints that are founded by the city staff, different than complaints that a neighbor may have.
That's correct. Now, a neighbor may make a complaint and the city staff may investigate it and find that, yes, in fact, that is a valid complaint, at which point a notice of violation would go to the property owner.
Or they may not, they might find that the complaint is not substantiated.
Yes. We are looking at notices of violation issued.
And if a neighbor complains about a trash can being left out or a lawn not being mowed, and as long as it's rectified, it is not a founded complaint?
It is a founded complaint if we send out a notice of violation. If it's rectified, the Board of Zoning Appeals can certainly consider that.
Okay.
Just a quick question. You know, how did staff recommendation arrive at three violations as the standard?
City council can set that number wherever city council desires to set that number.
Was that something that was brought up in planning commission?
No.
The three? Okay.
Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. I have one speaker's card. Mr. Shelley, did you want to speak on this matter or did you want to speak later? It's your, it's your call.
The speaker's card was for...
Okay. If you'd like to speak now, please come forward. Okay. Anybody is welcome to come forward. And if each person could state your name and address, please, that would be appreciated.
Yes, my name is Stuart Hughes, 103 Williamsburg Avenue. My lima, or whatever you want to call it, is that the city records in 1961 were, it's within your records, the original landowner is still alive and still dealing with the properties as they are listed in 1961. Reference my mother, she has two duplexes. And also, we have a single dwelling residence that has two units listed in the city assessments. So what more do you want? It's the city's records, they tax upon that, and it shouldn't be a burden on my mother to prove something from 1961 where most of her friends are dead and trying to find somebody to write a letter saying that, yes, these are duplexes. They've always been duplexes. And the unit I live in has always been a two-unit property. And it's just, you know, I understand that there are other instances, but it's in the record. And it's a burden on the owner to go back to 1961 when you do have it already listed in your assessments from that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seifers?
I just want to say one thing. I was already been...
Sir, if you wouldn't mind, name and address, please, for the...
My name is Robert Seifers. I've got a house on 120 Matoka Court. One thing I'd like to see is the number of years they can go back and check on whether it's been a duplex, because in 2054, we'll have 50 more years to have to prove it. So it should be a time limit. You can go back 10 years, five years, whatever it is. So you don't have to keep all those records for 50 years. And on complaints, the way I look at complaints, the city, if the city gives me a complaint, they give me X number of days to get it done. And I get them done within that time period. As long as they're not even major complaints, as long as I'm taking care of them, there shouldn't be any limit on complaints, as long as you're taking care of them. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Seifers. Mr. Shelley?
My name again is Stuart Hughes, 103 Williamsburg Avenue. Is that during the World War II period, the city of Williamsburg requested that all homeowners open their homes and make room for the wives of the service people in the local military, which they did. And so a lot of these duplexes were requested at the city's request. And so now you're trying to step back and say, we had nothing to do with it. So that's another thought to put in your process where the city requested that these things be done for the military wives to be with their husbands at the five military bases that surround Williamsburg. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Mr. Shelley?
Hi, I'm Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. And first of all, I want to thank the council and everyone else for recognizing the onerous burden there is on the owners to go back 50 years. And thank you for your proposal here to address it. Very interesting comments from Mr. Hughes there about, a little bit about the history of duplexes. Duplexes are not inherently bad for community. In fact, just the opposite. They add so much. They add affordable housing, whether or not to be college students, but we have workforce housing. I certainly have run mine to firemen and others over the years. There's nothing inherently wrong. In fact, they add a lot to our community. I was able to witness the BZA event that took place last year with the McConnells at 211 Indian Springs Road. They were challenged by the city about the conformity or non-conformity of their duplex. And they did prevail. But it was at considerable cost, not only in terms of dollars, but also intentions it made for the residents that lived there, knowing that they could be evicted, as happened to Mr. Seifers with his. He had to reduce, he had to tell three of his people they could no longer reside. That was in the middle of the school year. This is very burdensome on some. Certainly, your 15A is a proposal that is better than what we have now. But I would ask that you strike the violation clauses. This would be number three and B3, and also 4D, that the special exception can be revoked. I would like to read a letter that perhaps you all have read already. I'll read from it. It's from Mr. and Mrs. McConnell, Isabel and Russ McConnell. And they were the ones whose house on 211 Indian Springs, they endured something that nobody should have to endure. And the city certainly doesn't want to get involved with something like this again. "Thank you for allowing me to provide input to the city council initiative on the treatment of duplex dwellings and rental property. We are the proud parents of two women Mary students who are now graduates, who lived at 211 Indian Springs Road with roommates from the period of August 2013 to May 2017. We purchased the property for our girls to live in while students, and also as a potential retirement home for ourselves. Prior to buying the Indian Springs property, we looked at property in Berkeley Hills and Capelanding Road and other locations, but the girls said, no, they wanted to live within walking distance of the college. The house at 211 Indian Springs Road is a Cape Cod constructed in 1947 with a small efficiency apartment in the back behind the garage. In the fall of 2016, we received a notice from the city of Williamsburg that the house was not in compliance. We think that a neighbor reported the alleged infraction. Our case was ultimately decided in our favor, and our property was found to be a non-conforming duplex, that is, a grandfathered legal apartment. But the ordeal was not inexpensive, easy or pleasant, and considerable time was invested by the BZA. Our legal bill was five figures. We were subjected, we were subjected to some really mean-spirited and derisive comments at the meeting of the BZA. And the BZA was left to listen to our neighbors' embarrassing session of venting and ranting about having to live near college students. All this to yield a unanimous BZA 5-0 vote in our favor. Of course, we were happy to have our position affirmed, but it was expensive, unpleasant, and in our opinion, unnecessary. It would seem prudent for the city of Williamsburg to resolve the status of all the duplexes in the community. That way, everyone could begin the process of healing in the community and establishing better relations between the neighbors and the students in the residential area. Regarding the violation clauses, there is also the possibility the neighbors would make complaints just to run up the violation count. Although the BZA found it in our favor, the hearing was not one of Williamsburg's finest moments as far as community harmony. Written statements from the BZA action documented in the BZA minutes of January 3 demonstrate the types of comments and testimony allowed by the BZA in the hearing. Very little was presented in the way of factual discussion of the merits. It was mostly anti-student diatribes, stereotyping, and unsubstantiated whining that was so openly false that no attempt to refute was even necessary. This hostility that some Williamsburg residents have towards college students is not a good representation of the city. Williamsburg is a beautiful park-like city, a historical treasure, and home to a very great institution. I hope that you, we, are able to resolve the differences between the parties involved. The William and Mary students who live out in the community will remember more than just all the academic stuff that they learned between Jamestown and Richmond Roads. As the adults in the matter, we might all see this as an opportunity to ratchet down the rhetoric and emotion and demonstrate some civility and citizenship. Best wishes to everyone, Isabel and Russ McConnell. And I would hope that we would heed their advice and act as adults. And let's do away with these violation clauses, which have nothing to do with the issue, which is the onerous burden of owners to prove 50 years of records. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Anybody else? Mr. Kaiser?
My name's Dennis Kaiser. I live on Matoka Court. And when I was on the BZA in the training session that we went through, what we talked about with non-conforming use was that the intent of non-conforming use was that one day it would become conforming. What you're doing now is making it easier for the property to stay non-conforming by just going back to 2004. I agree that going back to 1966, it puts a lot of burden on the homeowner. However, there are some cases where it's easier to prove or not prove whether in 1966 it was a duplex or was it, you know, just a single-family home. So what you may be doing right now is making something legal because it's been operating as a duplex, let's say, since 1980 or 1990. You're making it legal when in reality, it's not legal. So you're actually expanding the non-conforming units within the city. Now, Mr. Seifers and I disagree on that. But on his particular case, for example, the church that I go to owned that piece of property in 1966 and used it as the parish home until 1970. Well, the law changed in 1966. So from 1966 to 1970, it was not a duplex. And so that was the contention in between myself and Mr. Seifers. But I think that more than just that one case exists where there are duplexes being operated that legally weren't duplexes in 1966. And if you do this now, what you're saying is, if you're a duplex in 2004 and we're in the rental inspection district, then you can continue to do that. Some of these houses are not designed as duplexes, okay? There's, there's one case on Matoka where the house is 1,600 square feet. It doesn't qualify for the four-person rule, yet you have six in there. It was designed and operated for years. The original owner was a single woman, kept it as a, as her home until the, she died in 1998 or something like that. And she would occasionally take on a border, like this gentleman was talking about, where the, the college or the city had actually encouraged people to take on rumors. She had taken on professors and grad students and things like that. But it was only two to three people in the home. Now it's six. Well, that house, if it was the four-person rule, it doesn't have parking for six people. But that's what's there. So what my question is, what can we do, if you're going to do this, what can we do to restrict some of these occupancies inside of these duplex so that they at least have the amount of parking and, and things like that, so that it's not a burden on the neighborhood? In this particular case, you've got six in the house. You've got parking, which includes off-street parking of four, but you've got six in the house. So where do the other two park and then all the guests? So this needs to be thought out, that what you're doing is allowing a house that was built as a single-family home where you had a family, whether it would be a single person or a couple, they took on a rumor. And because of the, the way the law is written, that was a duplex. So if the law were like that in 1966, would I operate, because I have a rumor, is I would have a duplex. And that's not what I have. So the mistake was made in 1966 to not write the zoning laws to say that there's such thing as a duplex and there's such things as a owner-occupied duplex. And if we'd have just put in the, in the rules in 1966 of owner-occupied duplex, then some of these cases wouldn't be here. So that's my input. And I think that you ought to consider that we may be making some things that are illegal today legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Would anybody else like to speak before we let anybody else come back to speak? One at a time.
Bob Seifers again. The house here referred to was sold by the church in 1971 to the Darce family. The Darce family bought it as a duplex with two, two separate renters in there paying their own electric bills on their own electric meters. They have their own driveways. They have their own heating systems. The church sold that house as a duplex. There is no records on that house to prove that that was not a duplex the whole time the church owned it.
Thank you, Mr. Seifers. Mr. Shelley?
Gary Shelley again. I just want to say that in rebuttal to Mr. Kaiser's statement, it essentially comes down to, do we welcome duplexes into the community or not? Mr. Kaiser made it sound as if that the, the Williamsburg downtown should be single-family residential only, that it would be better if every house was like that. I disagree with that. I totally reject that premise. Perhaps you agree one way, perhaps you agree the other. But it's my contention that these duplexes add to our community. And I hope you consider that in your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Anybody else? Last call? Not seeing anybody. We'll close the public hearing, come back to council for discussion.
I have a lot of thoughts on this.
I look forward to hearing them.
This takes me back to the rental of rooms to rumors discussion circa 2010, 2011. I'm generally a fan of new urbanism. New urbanism mirrors what Mr. Hughes was describing that was going on before, during, and after World War II, where there were accessory uses on lots. There could be a small cottage behind a principal residence. You see a number of those throughout Williamsburg. I recently bought a house, looked at several in that process, and you would be surprised, the number that have either been converted and back to a single-family, or you can tell that, you know, at one point, it was a duplex or it did have someone else living on the property. It's, it, in many ways, our Williamsburg neighborhoods are a time capsule in that way. So as a general premise, I support the idea of flexibility in this area. Also think it is pretty onerous to have to go back to 1966. That's a long time. Chris, could you talk a little bit about, we kind of went down the topic of violations. What are typical violations? Things that you would see the most often?
Building code, not cutting grass, noise.
Okay. And so to substantiate a, just say, peeling paint situation, staff would go out, check it out. If it was in fact the case, they send a letter?
Uh huh. With a timeframe for correction.
And how long is a timeframe?
It's generally 30 days.
Okay. And substantiating a noise violation?
So when someone is, so I might back up to sort of the process for noise. When the city receives a complaint for noise, the police department goes out and responds. If there is in fact noise, the first time they go out, the property owner or the individuals residing at the property get a warning. The second time they go out, they might get cited for a noise violation. Then that case gets tried in the general district court because a summons is issued. And the court will either find that the violation wasn't proven or that the violation was proven, in which case, either find the defendant guilty of violating the noise ordinance, or they may withhold the finding. How that plays into the zoning process in the past and proceeding into the future because there is a court process that will... there is a court process that will prove beyond a reasonable doubt that there was a noise violation, we don't typically move forward with any zoning action for noise violation complaints of this kind unless we have a conviction.
So for purview of the BZA, a substantiated noise complaint would be one that had resulted in a conviction? So, and I understand staff isn't wedded to any particular number. All right, I have a few more in a second. Go ahead.
Okay.
Now, as I understand it, even with this special exception, a duplex would still not be considered legal?
This is an alternative to a special exception process. If someone has a legal non-conforming use, the city is not entitled to take that away by a special exception process. So this makes an easier process, but it is an alternative to a special exception process. If someone's duplex is not legally non-conforming, it's not legally non-conforming, but the special exception could allow it to continue if it existed prior to 2004. If it was legally non-conforming and existed prior to 1966 and has continued since that time, then it's legally non-conforming regardless of whether or not it gets a special exception.
So someone who's on that list, the 40 who have not already shown that they're legally non-conforming, if they go back to 1966 and show rental history without a lapse greater than two years, they would be considered legally non-conforming?
If it was a duplex prior to the change in the city code in 1966 and it has continued to be rented without a lapse of more than two years, it is a legal non-conforming use.
And this is not to create any more duplexes in the city. It's to keep the list as we know it today.
It will not create any additional duplexes.
Okay. And for violations in the lease, I believe, or violations, I believe that Carolyn Murphy has provided lease language to landlords to help them if there have been a series of complaints or to show them what could be included to help with that. Is that correct?
That's correct. Earlier this spring, as a member of the Neighborhood Relations Committee, the committee sent out a letter and lease language to landlords to possibly look at adding that to their leases in the future if they so desire.
That's it.
Just, so we have a list of 47 units. There may be some more in the city. This list does not hold, if it's discovered that a duplex comes forward in a different neighborhood that maybe it's not on here, they could still go through this process and...
That's correct.
Use a special exception to form as a duplex. You know, just as a general rule, you know, reminded, I grew up in the Barxstel House, which was a duplex. And as Mr. Hughes stated, you know, Ms. Barxstel used the second floor to house students. And I think that kind of use, as Councilman Vice Mayor Foster had mentioned, is commonplace in the city. And I think it's entirely appropriate for this small urban area that we are. And so I think if we can do this and kind of take away the onerous aspect of trying to prove that your house was a duplex from 1966 is a good step forward. And I think, I think, you know, we should, we should welcome these types of activities in the neighborhoods. And I think that Mr. Kaiser's correct, you know, that owner occupancy, owner-occupied duplex would have been good to do back in 1966. You know, frankly, I wouldn't be opposed to considering duplexes in the future, new duplexes in the future so long as they are owner-occupied. I think that's smart legislation and a good way to handle student housing or provide housing for other folks in the area that need an affordable place to stay. So I like what I see here.
Yep. Just generally speaking, I think it's, first, it's great to have that list of all the duplexes there. I think when we initiated this idea and this conversation, we had no idea that we had more than probably 10 duplexes. I thought we may have had two or three. So it's good to have at least that list there so that we all know to the public and also for us to consider this. And in general, it's just, it's just quite interesting from its only perspective to see that many. And also from Mr. Hughes' public comments, it's interesting with the history behind that. Always love to add context to that. No, I think generally with, I think a lot of my questions were answered. I was wondering about, you know, if the landlord rectified or the tenants rectified the notice of violation, how many days and the commitment to that, and just kind of seeing how much of the citations were going to be, how were they actually going to be recorded and considered in determining and evaluating the duplex special exception process. I generally don't have problems with duplexes unless if there were specific instances that we have that duplexes have caused undue pressure on our neighborhoods. I know of some, but, you know, I haven't seen that so far with at least this packet today. So I'm generally fine, and I'm kind of curious to see what the discussion goes along with in terms of the violations clause and all of that. Thank you.
Ms. Shelton. Mr. Seifers raised a question about a rolling window as opposed to a fixed date. Could you speak to that?
Well, I think we did it both ways in this ordinance. We did it for purposes of qualification, and we're looking at a fixed period of time. The rolling date was, you've got a recent violation, and it's really about establishing whether or not the landlord, the property owner, has been responsive to the violations occurred.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about the duplex use, the rolling window. He suggested the idea of, as opposed to picking 2004 as the cutoff date, that you have like a 10-year, that was just an example. It seems to me if you don't have a fixed date, it becomes much more difficult.
Well, it will. The problem is legal non-conforming uses have a fixed date in time. It became a legal or illegal non-conforming use in 1966. One of the reasons why in presenting the proposal to City Council, I chose to do this as a special exception is City Council clearly has the authority to move forward with a special exception process, which will serve exactly the same purpose. It's not completely clear to me whether or not City Council has the ability to have a rolling date for illegal non-conforming use. If they do, you're never, if the theory is someday these will go away, they will never go away if you have a rolling date.
Yeah, sure.
Perhaps administratively, we could affect that, that if someone came in and received a special exception, if every five or 10 years, we checked back with that property owner and they were able to provide the next period of time so that the property owner doesn't have to provide but a certain period of time to update their record, then you're only going back to the last time. It's kind of like doing a backup on your computer files. You don't have to go back to the beginning of your computer. You just go back to the last time you backed up. So maybe we'd be able to administratively maintain that backup or put that in?
And functionally, that is the zoning administrator's determination letter, which seven of these properties have. And so at a fixed date and time, we knew that they were a legal non-conforming use.
So, Mr. Collins, if you think that is manageable from city staff's standpoint, as he looks to city staff. Not hearing anything from Ms. Murphy.
With the small staff, that adds more staff time to it, but with 48, I think that's something we can probably do.
I think that would resolve that issue pretty well. The one other question, well, two others, but the violation issue. I understand the property maintenance is ultimately the responsibility of the landlord, and I guess a noise complaint is somehow ultimately the responsibility of the landlord, but it seems more detached from the landlord's obligation. And yet, it's, the noise complaint is only considered if there's a conviction in court.
That has been our practice, and that is when I approve these for Ms. Murphy to move forward with.
So for this to become an issue, there would have to be three convictions in court in one property over a period of?
One year.
One year. That would seem like that could be a problem.
Well, there's only been, how many did you say in the, I think in the past 2014 to 2015, there were only five total?
Citywide.
Citywide convictions for noise.
It's a warning system.
So I think the warning system seems to be helpful. Effective, yes.
So the other thing too, from an equity perspective, portion of these properties, because they are in the rental inspection district, odds are the city has been in them as a part of the rental inspection program and is on notice that they were being used as a duplex, but did not question that use.
Well, because the rental inspection ordinance is limited to violations of the Virginia Uniform statewide building code, we do not use that to enforce the zoning ordinance. It's not, it's not designed to do that, and we're not permitted to do that under state law.
But that's part of the logic why that date was chosen.
That is.
Right.
Right. You have more insight?
No, that's about it.
More discussion? Mr. Zhang?
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Pons?
Comfortable.
Somebody like to make a motion?
Let's get back to it.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approved proposed ordinance 17 dash, yeah, 17 dash 15A.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye. Motion passes. That concludes our public hearings for today. Next, the monthly financial statement. Mr. Sarah, anything you'd like to report?
Good afternoon, Mayor Friling and members of council. I'll give a short update on the city's financial report. We're up and running on the new Tyler financial software. We went live July 1st with the general ledger, purchasing, and accounts payable, and so far it's going very well. The new financial software is much more robust than the software we've been using. We now specify the exact months that transactions occur for both revenues and expenditures. July and August make up the 60-day accrual period for fiscal year 2017, and a lot of revenues and expenditures were already accrued during the month and are not included in July numbers on your report. That's why the overall revenues and expenditures are down. So the software provides for the accruals and helps reduce staff time working on the audit. Actual July numbers this year will, in a lot of cases, not show little or no activity in July, and many of the July numbers in last year's column are really June numbers that were eventually backed out after the audit was completed last December. So in a lot of cases, you're not comparing apples with apples. The differences will eventually work out this December when we'll be showing the same number of months revenues and expenditures for comparisons in both this year's and last year's columns. Moving forward, the year-to-date comparisons will be more accurate. And I'd like to just make a comment about the sales tax fund. The top of the statement on page three shows no sales tax revenue for July, and that's part of what I just talked about. The July receipts were accrued back to fiscal year 2017. And then also talking about state sales taxes, page five shows the running history of taxes. You can see 311,000 was received in July for May activity and was down quite a bit compared to last year's $380,000 figure. Slow because of adjustments for revenues generated by a few businesses in Jame City County that were incorrectly reported in Williamsburg's numbers over the last few years. We had a few communications with the Department of Taxation this week to understand the city's position right now concerning any other adjustments that could impact these sales taxes. And our understanding is that one more adjustment will be made this month, but not nearly as much as the July adjustment. And hopefully we'll get some consistency with these numbers moving forward. So we think we're about even with the monies that go back and forth because of jurisdictional coding errors with the county.
Questions for Mr. Sarah?
Um. It's just hard to believe that in 2017, we're still figuring out this coding, but glad you and the state are on top of it.
We, the Commissioner of Revenues Office has access to the computers, and we're trying to figure out a routine, working closely with the staff at Jame City County's Commissioner of Revenues Office, because they're really looking at this also.
I would have liked to have seen the numbers come the other way, though.
Thank you, Mr. Sarah. Any, anything else on financial, Mr. Collins? Takes us to departmental operating reports.
I'll just note that this is the last month that we'll be using the old report format. Next month, Mark will show you the new operating reports that updated. If you have any questions about what was provided, staff's available.
More new things for us to learn. Questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Takes us to city manager reports. First is budget amendment resolution 17 dash 14.
Mr. Collins gave a presentation in Monday's work session showing the need to reprogram capital improvement funds to coordinate the Monticello Avenue redesign project earlier than originally planned in 2020 due to the redevelopment of the project at the Williamsburg Shopping Center. Project budget of $4,129,000, which is the cost estimate determined by the city's transportation engineering consultant, is proposed to be funded from the 2017 carryover projects totaling $1,242,000. Those carryover projects are detailed in Mr. Collins' memo. The additional funding is proposed from a transfer of $2,387,000 from this year's FY2018 Capital Landing Road redesign project, and also another $500,000 from the utility fund for utility works from that project. The scheduling of capital projects will change from the original plan, moving the Monticello Avenue redesign project design and construction bidding in fiscal year 2018 with construction next year in 2019. The Capital Landing Road redesign project will start design work in FY2019 and construction the following year in 2020. Proposed resolution 17 dash 14 will provide for the budget amendment to transfer these funds.
Questions?
No. Sense?
Yes, straightforward.
Yes, thank you.
You know, before I remember in that work session, I asked a question about how the funds could be used, you know, capital projects, particularly thinking about the fire and police station. And, you know, that's been one of the primary concerns in my mind, is how to get that funding and making sure that we can, within our means, get that funded because that's a core service. But, you know, I think Midtown redevelopment has been a big focus in the city for many years, and it's, you know, it's an economic development purpose for this fund, and I think it makes sense. It's a sound recommendation, and I support it.
I could just point out to council, this does not increase the FY18 budget. It's using existing appropriated funds that were already planned to be spent, savings from past projects, projects that'll be used in the future.
So what we're basically doing is flipping the priority or the timing on the Monticello Avenue improvements with the Capital Landing Road improvements in order to take advantage of the opportunity to supplement what the new property owners of the Williamsburg Shopping Center will be trying to accomplish and thereby potentially furthering the economic development capacity of that area of Midtown.
What you said.
Sure. That's right.
I mean, to me, there's a tremendous opportunity here. We, how, we've been waiting for the redevelopment of the Williamsburg Shopping Center for as long as I've been on city council, and now the opportunity is in front of us. And to take this small step, which really is just switching the priority of projects to make that possible, is a tremendous step forward for the city. And to your point, Mr. Zhang, you know, we will have those pressures about funding the police station and fire station, but it's this type of economic growth that's going to fund that, those opportunities in the future because they'll create more revenue in the city and help us meet those other expenses.
Absolutely.
Other comments? Motion?
I move that city council approve proposed resolution 17 dash 14, a resolution amending the general capital improvement fund budget for the city of Williamsburg, Virginia for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Next city manager report is the VDOT programming and surplus fund transfer resolution 17 dash 13. Mr. Small?
Mayor and city council, as the city manager had explained in Monday's work session, the city was allocated urban roadway funds on three projects that are currently dormant, so those funds remain unspent. Two of these projects were completed under budget, while the third was a project that was funded but later canceled when it was determined that the project was no longer warranted. Under the 2016 Appropriations Act, these unspent urban formula funds may be used to advance priority transportation projects. If not used, these funds will be de-allocated by the state and transferred to the state of good repair program at the end of this calendar year. Because these funds are partially federal aid, the transportation project that uses these funds has, must have a longer timeframe to meet that federal documentation, review times, and authorizations than you would from a locally funded project. And so as Mr. Collins described on Monday, the And so as Mr. Collins described on Monday, the Capital Landing Road project can accommodate that federal aid schedule. Last year, the city had applied for two million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty in state aid revenue sharing funds for the project, but was unsuccessful due to the limited funding for new projects in that program. This, the project along Capital Landing Road provides for a renewed streetscape, which would reduce the number of travel lanes, accommodate on-street parking, bicyclists and pedestrians, and provide for decorative amenities, transit shelters and other aesthetic improvements to encourage redevelopment of that corridor. The project also includes underground wiring along Capital Landing Road from the Colonial Parkway Bridge to Merrimack Trail. The total cost of that project is five million seven hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred. The resolution before you today would establish this Capital Landing Road project in the VDOT six-year improvement plan, and it would also transfer the existing urban allocation funds from the three dormant projects to this project. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So this amount would be added to basically what we just flipped.
So basically, we are taking unspent urban allocation funds. We have to reallocate them to a project. If we had the ability to allocate them to the Monticello Avenue corridor, we would. The problem is the timeline to navigate the bureaucracy involved in accepting the federal funds will not allow us to do that in time to spend them on the Monticello Avenue project. So we're putting them to the project that we have just deferred, which is Capital Landing Road, from which we just took money to put to Monticello.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Just want to double check. Thank you.
Yep.
Say it so well, Paul.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I think it's great that you all and staff have been able to keep an eye on all these balls that are juggling to make sure that we don't lose the opportunity to spend these monies that ultimately don't fall directly on our taxpayers here.
All in favor? Somebody like to make a motion?
Recommend council-approved resolution seventeen dash thirteen to request VDOT establish the Capital Landing Road corridor project in the six-year improvement plan, transfer the surplus urban formula funds and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents relative to carrying out the project. Second.
Scott?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Takes us to the third city manager report. Hampton Roads Sanitation District, SWIFT agreement, Dan Clayton. And again, Mr. Collins, I'd like to congratulate you on not doing any of the city manager reports today.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, city council, I've got just a few remarks here before I turn it over to, we have the general manager from Hampton Roads Sanitation District here today to go over this project more fully. Yet before you, an agreement between Hampton Roads Sanitation District and the city, HRSD is a regional authority and treats all the sewer in the Hampton Roads area, both on the peninsula and the south side, as well as the parts of the middle peninsula. They operate nine major, actually award-winning plants in Hampton Roads and another four smaller plants on the middle peninsula. Of course, those plants are heavily regulated, and there are limitations on the amounts of nutrients that can be discharged through the receiving channels and eventually to the Chesapeake Bay. The localities also have nutrient limits, and what we can contribute by way of our stormwater to our waterways and onto the bay. So just in a nutshell, HRSD is discharging quite a bit less than they are allowed, therefore there's actual credits, if you will, to give localities, thus practically eliminating our requirement for nutrient reductions. Further, HRSD has come up with a long-term solution for the restoration of the bay, among other benefits, known as the strategic, I mean, sustainable water initiative for tomorrow, or SWIFT. And SWIFT not only helps the restoration of the bay, but it has other valuable benefits. This is where I will turn it over to Mr. Henneffin, the general manager of HRSD, who's really the principal behind this initiative. Staff fully supports the agreement. There are eleven other jurisdictions that are involved with the initiative. They're taking up the same agreement. I think there's six or seven that have approved the agreement, and the rest are expected to prove it this month. Mr. Henneffin has been the general manager for Hampton Roads for eleven years. Before that, he was the public works director for the city of Hampton, so he understands local government.
Welcome, Mr. Henneffin.
Thank you, appreciate it. Always nice to talk sewage, and, well, actually, we're going to talk of wide variety, and I'm going to try to set the stage for this agreement and how we're able to pull this off, hopefully a little less complicated than your VDOT funding explanation there because I couldn't repeat that. So as Dan Clayton mentioned, the TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load, the pollution diet for the Chesapeake Bay is really the driver behind this, and as he clearly said, there's really two regulated sources of nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment to the bay, and those are wastewater treatment plants, commonly referred to as point sources, and then the non-point sources, which are your MS fours, your municipal separate storm sewer systems, essentially your stormwater. The other big player is the agricultural community upstream, and they're largely unregulated, so they do their work voluntarily. So that leaves us in this position where those of us who are highly regulated are having to pick up a lot of the load. So HRSD, as Dan said, we discharge to very, we treat our water to very, very fine, low levels of nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment, and we do that very well, and we are, have award-winning plants, but we discharge a hundred and fifty million gallons a day into waters that ultimately get to the Chesapeake Bay. So just a little bit of nitrogen and phosphorus in each gallon means we discharge a lot. And the bay model, so the way they decided how the pollution diet was going to work, it's all been done with modeling, is to determine how much naturally can be assimilated. How much can the bay live with on a daily basis from a nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment basis? And they took that overall number and divided it up between point sources like us, stormwater, agriculture, whether they get their numbers or not, and they allocated that out. And so essentially, it's all fully allocated in Virginia. Everybody that wants to discharge has to already have an allocation, or they're going to have to be trading to get that, or they're going to have to generate some credits, some way to do that. So the reason we have some excess at the moment is ours was assigned, like all other wastewater treatment plants in the bay, based on our ultimate design flow. We obviously build our treatment plants to deal with population growth in the 2040, 2050 timeframe, and we're not discharging that amount today. So we've got some excess capacity today. We won't have it in, say, 2040. So as we've been looking long-term at what we want to do to help the bay and help our region, we came up with this idea that we'd like to take our water all the way to drinking water standards and then maybe solve some other regional environmental issues by putting that water into the ground instead of discharging it into the bay. We've got this great aquifer. In fact, it was on the news today. It's been on the news lately. I don't know if anybody heard the report on NPR this morning, but Virginia's been dealing with this eastern Virginia groundwater management area, which is basically east of 95. It's a very productive aquifer that sits underneath us, about three to 500 feet below where we stand today. It's got a clay cap on top of it, so it's actually pressurized. And back at the turn of the century, if you penetrated that clay cap, water would rise 31 feet above sea level. So it would be free-flowing if you were maybe a little further downhill from Williamsburg, but it would be free-flowing out of that pipe, and you'd actually control the water with a valve instead of a pump. It didn't take us long because with all natural resources, we just decided to tap it and not really worry about whether it was ever going to be there again for future generations. And along the whole eastern part of Virginia, we've been using that water up faster than nature can replenish it. It can only replenish it along a very narrow corridor along 95, and that's where the, basically, the aquifer, this layer of sands and gravels that holds water, comes up to the bedrocks. And when you think of 95 corridor, you think of Fredericksburg, you got the rocks in the Rappahannock River, you got Richmond with the James River. You go a little further north, you've got Great Falls in northern Virginia. That's really where this layer that's been created over many, many times, that the sea has risen and fallen over the history of the world, and it's deposited all this great material on the bedrock in Virginia to that point where the bedrock comes out. So that layer has been built up over those years, and that narrow bit where it recharges is not enough to allow water to get back in this aquifer at the rate at which we've been taking it out. And so, you know, it's hard to understand, or at least conceptualize, it has been for me, that we have a pretty wet region, you know, it rains quite often. How can we have water problem down below? And if you dig a post hole in your yard, you know, it fills with water. So the water's got to be right there. There's a number of superficial aquifers at the top, and that's not what we're talking about. We're several hundred feet down, and this clay layer keeps the rainwater from getting in, just like it keeps the water from getting out. So as we've depleted that over time, we need more water. We want to find a different place to put our water. If we treat it to drinking water standards, it becomes very valuable. We came up with the idea that we could pump it back into the aquifer, solve that problem and maybe help some other things like the bay, because we won't be discharging over a hundred million gallons that we discharged today would no longer go out into the bay. It'd be highly treated, back to drinking water standards and put in the ground. So that gives us, when I said we only had till maybe 2040 to provide these credits, that gives us the ability to provide permanent credits to offset your needs. It doesn't mean you have to use those. This agreement is set up so that you've got hundreds of pounds of need in the phosphorus and nitrogen area and then the hundreds of thousands of pounds of needs in the sediment area. We've got hundreds of thousands, actually millions of pounds of nitrogen and hundreds of thousands of pounds of phosphorus and millions of pounds of sediment to trade with our localities. And so what we're trying to do is help our localities have options in meeting their TMDL requirements. So very expensive, if you looked at the most cost-effective way to eliminate nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment from the bay, it's to go upstream to the farms and do it on agricultural land. If you looked at the second least expensive way, it's at the wastewater treatment plants, where we deal with millions and millions of gallons, so each dollar we spend, we can get a lot of pounds out. The most expensive way is with stormwater retrofits in an urban area, where if you had to go beyond your current plans, which right now you're doing a lot of maintenance work and pulling people off septic systems and street sweeping and all those great things you're doing in this first permit cycle, if you have to go beyond that, typically you're building, you know, ponds on school property or other city-owned property, and then you've got to maintain those, and then you've got to make sure they continue to work for perpetuity from that point forward. So this is a very cost-effective way for the region to meet its TMDL requirements. It's not guaranteed because we're pursuing this concept on SWIFT, which is our sustainable water infrastructure for tomorrow, and we're pursuing that, and we won't know if it's ready to go until mid-2025 timeframe. And so at that point, this agreement would automatically convert to permanent credits, but up to that point, we're confident that we're generating more than enough credits to take care of your needs and the ten other localities that are entering the same agreements through 2036. So why 2025 and 2036? If it turns out we can't do SWIFT in 2025, you've got 11 years to meet your commitments that you already have time to meet today. So essentially, you're putting your need to meet your commitments on hold, we're providing credits to make that work for you, and we'll turn them into permanent offset potentially in 2025 if SWIFT goes forward. So that's the general concept. There's a lot to it, but hopefully, here to answer whatever questions you might have.
Well, thank you. That was a terrific explanation.
As a non-science person, that was a very good, I actually understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's right.
Come to you with questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
And I have no questions. It was really educational, and thank you very much. If I could repeat one little bit of it, I don't think I could. Thank you.
So pumping the water back in the aquifer would seem to me would be an additional way to filter the water and ultimately make the environment that much cleaner. In your analysis of all of that, is there a negative consequence that you would be willing to share?
We haven't found one yet. Our treatment process is fairly complex because we're looking for even, you know, things that you don't normally look for in drinking water today. We're looking for all the emerging contaminants, anything that's potential in there, so we're having to add some pretty sophisticated treatment and to make that happen. So that's the billion-dollar price tag, which we're having to do work for EPA for wet weather, and so we already have that built into our rates. So I guess the downside would be cost, but we're going to have to spend that money one way or another, and we get more benefits out of this. So I'd say that it's not a fatal flaw. We've built it into our financial plan. Our rates are going to go up just as if we had projected already. This doesn't change those projections. But treating wastewater is expensive. This way, we get multiple benefits out of doing that.
Well, yeah, if anybody believes that our utility costs are going to be less expensive in the future, they're sorely mistaken. So I like the creativity of this and think that, you know, if it helps as you prescribe, then I think it's a good idea.
Thank you for your presentation, and I think I agree with my colleagues. I think it's a cost-effective and innovative way to kind of protect a jewel and gem in the Chesapeake Bay, but also to solve an issue that is pervasive among a lot of localities of Virginia. Just our next county over have been dealing with water issues for as long as I was here, which was not that long since I was a student, but I guess I can't really use that effectively. But I just had one question. In terms of federal regulations, do we anticipate any changes or unpredictability that may lead to changing this innovative project? I only say that because I don't understand federal regulations as well, but seeing what I'm seeing in the news lately, things change quite often, so didn't know if there were any conversations on the federal level that might affect that.
So, you know, we think maybe there's some opportunity to take advantage of the current situation to make sure we get the best deal going forward as far as our obligations under some other regulatory environment we're in. But as far as the treatment of the water and putting it in the ground, that's pretty clear-cut, and I don't expect any changes. And actually, when you look at the changes that the current administration's proposing, none of them deal really with the science behind water quality. We're committed to doing the right thing regardless of how the regulations change. Now, I don't anticipate with this administration any tighter changes, cranking down, but that doesn't mean four years from now we don't see renewed effort to, you know, increase the amounts that we have to remove. And that's really one of the big drivers behind this, is we have five-year permits, and we make major investments in our treatment plants. These are huge facilities. And if you can imagine having to make a major investment with only a five-year guarantee that that's the outcome you have to have at the end of five years, and then they can crank down the regulations after that, that's really what drove us to the decision that instead of making changes every five years, let's just leap forward, treat our water to drinking water, there's nothing else we can do to it, and then find a good use for it.
Absolutely.
So that's where we're at. I do think that we'll see some changes in the TMDL, but I think this protects the fact that we can trade, and we've got plenty of capacity to do that, will help prevent you guys from having to do more potentially in municipalities on the stormwater side.
Sure, thank you very much.
You know, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, the prevailing thought was that future natural resource-based geopolitical conflict would revolve around oil, and anymore, it's probably going to be about water. People can live without oil, they cannot live without water, and we're already seeing a tightening of this resource, even in our region, which has huge resources and opportunities. So anything you can do to help move us in the right direction should be applauded. On the TMDL question, is that compartmentalized? Is the agricultural runoff tested at some point upstream, and then they're evaluated on their contribution? Or if they are overproducing on the phosphorus, the nitrogen or the suspended solids, does that then impact the rating of your point source or MS4?
It's a great question, and so, actually, there's very little in-stream monitoring done anywhere in the bay TMDL, so this is all based on models of what runs off the property. But because there are no regulatory hooks on the agricultural side, when the TMDL came out in 2010, those pre-briefings from EPA basically said, we would be the backstop. So if agriculture doesn't meet their loads, then we would have to do more than we're currently doing.
We'd be forced to.
So the regulated community, both stormwater and point source, and predominantly point source, would see much more requirements. That was another driver for us. We currently have spent about three-quarters of a billion dollars getting to the nitrogen and phosphorus levels we're at today. To get to the levels it would take to be at the backstop level for EPA would be another three-quarters of a billion-dollar investment in our current treatment plans. So we're trying to avoid that by looking for a better way to do this and get more benefit out of that.
Do you have a sense of which is more? I assume that it's more expensive to treat it to drinking water standards than to change the discharge outflow into the aquifer, but is there, have a relative cost on those?
So I think you're saying to keep people from pulling water out?
No, you've got two components to what you're talking about. One is treating the water to drinking water level, and the other is changing from discharge into the bay to into the aquifer.
It's the treatment, sir, yes, sir. It's significantly much more. It's actually fairly inexpensive to pump it down into the aquifer.
Can you talk to us a little bit about how much backflow there is in the aquifer based upon your injection of water and then what that does on the subsidence issues?
Sir, I'd forgotten all about that in this, trying to keep it short. So, that's all right, that's great. So our water actually, and this gets pretty complex, but the water doesn't travel very far from where we put it in the ground. So it's a pressurized system, so if you can imagine, as we're putting the water in, it's pressurizing, it's pushing water molecules basically away from each other throughout the whole aquifer. water molecules basically away from each other throughout the whole aquifer. So the big benefit is a huge pressure increase across the entire aquifer felt as far north as Maryland and down into North Carolina, over a 50-year simulation. And what that pressure increase does is it helps us address subsidence. So the land's been sinking because we've been sucking water out of this aquifer for the better part of 100 years. So USGS, the Geological Survey, has estimated that in Hampton Roads, our sea level rise issue is a net sea level rise. So the sea's rising and we can all debate why, but all it takes is a ruler to show that it is definitely rising. Tides are higher. In our region, it's complicated by the fact the ground's sinking. And our ground sinking and the sea rising are roughly half and half for the net sea level rise in our region. And about half of the ground sinking issue is due to pulling the water out of the aquifer. The modeling is showing that we can recover most of that over a long-term simulation. And we have one anecdotal piece of evidence. So there's only two locations in all of southeastern, actually all of Virginia, where USGS has a monitoring device to determine the compaction of the aquifer. So they basically drill a hole 2,000 feet down, put a rod to bedrock. It comes up and it attaches to a simple machine, basically a beam that comes across with a rod attached here and then when ground moves up and down, it deflects the beam. So it's a very simple device. They've got one in Suffolk at the VDOT transportation area and they've got one down in Franklin. Those are the only two that are here. Of course, all good federal programs in 1998, they ran out of money to monitor it, so they mothballed it. So we've got a little gap in our data set, but they did go out and take a picture of it in 2002, the one in the Suffolk-Franklin area, and it was level. They came back in 2015 just to check on their equipment. It sits in a little shed. They unlocked the shed, took a picture and there was a tremendous deflection. They did their calculations and it wasn't that the land had settled, it had actually risen. And so everyone starts scratching their head. So between 2002 and 2015, 32-millimeter rise in the elevation of land around Franklin area at this one location. The IP paper mill in Franklin is one of the largest, it's the second-largest groundwater user in Virginia. It stopped production in 2009 when it closed down and when it came back online, it was about a quarter of the water it was using before. So we know that stopping pulling water out definitely allowed the ground to rebound. The modeling says we'll see similar results over time by putting our water back in. Now, some people are concerned about differential settlement. You know, what happens if we start putting water in? Is my house going to pop over here and the street's going to be... This aquifer again is 300 to 500 feet, the top of it is under this clay layer way below us. So think of it as a giant mat. So if we're successful, the whole region would feel a little bit of movement, but no one would really notice it. And then the other issue people worry about with that is earthquakes. Oklahoma just last week had another earthquake related to injection of waste oil products basically deep into rock fissures. So in the geology we're dealing with, it's a very homogeneous layers of sands and clays, no rocks. We're above the bedrock. The bedrock's about 2,000, 2,500 feet below us. Oklahoma, where they're doing this shale work, they go into the rock. We're going to be putting our water in at somewhere in 10 to 40 pounds per square inch. They're in the 1,000 to 2,000 pounds per square inch when they're injecting the wastewater and it's deep, deep, 5,000, 6,000 feet down. So USGS doesn't see any earthquake potential from our work. It's very different, but again, that's something people are worried about when we talk about it.
Two quick questions. Is there any look at along the aquifer, the entire length of it, creating ways for supplemental reinforcement or replenishment of the supply through rainwater or groundwater?
There's a lot of people now that we're talking about it, looking at can we capture some rainwater, drinking water, freshwater, other ways to put it back in the ground. New Kent is looking at that a little bit. You know, they've built a very sophisticated wastewater treatment plant to treat, to provide water for their golf courses and other things up there. So they've got a high quality already, wouldn't take much more to get that. Hanover County's been looking a little bit, but no one's, it's still pretty expensive to capture rainwater or pull it out of a reservoir and then pump it in the ground if you have to treat it to drinking water standards. And to get to your point, it does get additional treatment from the soil and we're working today studying that to understand exactly what additional treatment it gets. And our estimates right now show that the nearest well that would actually be drinking this water at some point might be 100 years before the water gets there. It travels at about 30 feet a year away from our well. So it's going to be very mixed with the native groundwater. It's going to have the benefit of a lot of aquifer soil treatment. The native soil's doing its own thing. So by the time someone actually drinks the water that we put in, even though I've drank a lot of it already and we offer a lot of tastings and you're more than welcome to come to York River and taste it anytime, it's great. People really won't be drinking this water for generations to come and by the time they do, it's so blended with the other water that no one will be able to even see a signature that it was once, it had a different history than the rest of the water in the aquifer.
And I promise, last question. Can you just say a few words about any impact of medications and prescription drugs in wastewater treatment that you undertake now?
Sure. So up to this project, we really weren't monitoring that a lot. There's a lot of studying going on across the country to see what's happening with that. We've been doing extensive state-of-the-art studying, analysis and adding treatment to actually deal with that. So by treating it drinking water standards, we've added some sophisticated ozonation and UV work and carbon filtering that actually removes those substances. There's a list of 96 that we're actually tracking for. And if you can imagine how challenging this is, you give a scientist or lab tech a sample of water and say, find everything that's in it. And it could be up to actually somewhere in the 96 range. And so that's very hard for them to do those analyses. And we've done those by these specialized labs and we're finding that at the end of our treatment process, we've removed all of those below detection limits. And those are measured in nanograms per liter or parts per trillion. So we're very confident that we've got the best science behind that. It's all getting out. It isn't all getting out in our current wastewater discharge. We're getting out a lot through our plants today. It's also not getting out through most people's drinking water plants as they bring surface water into their water system. So by intentionally doing what we're doing, where we know the water's history has potential to have it in, we're actually treating it a much higher level with this project than we would any other way.
And everybody can help in that regard by disposing a medication properly.
Do not flush your medications. Yes, please.
Sorry for all the questions. We don't get this opportunity very often.
You don't get to talk wastewater. I can't believe it. Every council meeting should have a talk about wastewater.
It's appalling, doesn't it?
Maybe he solves the flooding issues down in some of the neighborhoods in Hampton.
Well, that is truly, well, we should gain a lot of time on the sea level rise. We're never going to stop it, but we potentially get a lot more productive years out of some of that lowland land.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that council authorize the city manager to execute the Hampton Roads Water Quality Credit Agreement for Chesapeake Bay Restoration between the city and HRSD.
Second it.
Ms. Scott.
Ms. Zane.
Aye.
Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Aye.
That concludes the city manager reports and takes us to the city attorney report, which I've been looking forward to this all day. Lifetime dog licenses.
This is going to be far less interesting than that. The 2007 General Assembly Session, the Senate enacted Senate Bill 856, which allows a locality to issue lifetime dog licenses. So in addition to our one, two or three-year license, we are authorized to offer a lifetime dog license. This is optional on the part of the city council. It's also optional on the part of the dog owner. The statute allows for a maximum license fee permitted as $50. The dog owner is still required by state law and by city code to obtain and maintain their current rabies vaccination for the dog being licensed. The license is valid for so long as the rabies vaccination is current and the dog owner resides in the city. The Finance Department has requested that we put this on the agenda and so the staff recommendation is that city council adopt proposed ordinance 17-14.
Questions? Comments?
Makes life easier.
June and Fay say thank you, right?
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 17-14.
Again.
Ms. Scott.
Ms. Zane.
Aye.
Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
It's time to say woof, but...
And the motion passes. That completes the city attorney reports and takes us to unfinished business, which we have four items under consideration related to the Tourism Development Fund. And I'd just like to start off by saying that some new information has come to my attention that suggests I will be unable to render an unbiased opinion on this matter and therefore I will not participate in the discussion or the vote, so I'll turn the gavel over to Vice Mayor Foster.
Thanks, Paul. I'll continue with Paul's tradition of letting the person to the right of him speak first. Barb?
Okay. So since I'm first, I just wanted to give a little recap on what we've been working on over the past few months and a few adjustments and changes that have occurred thanks to a lot of conversation among city staff, residents, council members and just in our community forum. And as you can see, I've sort of gone to the notebook form. There's a lot of information that all of us have been sent and so I will refer to some notes as we go along here. And I'm going to sort of touch on four or five different things. One is sort of what started the TDF conversation. And I think it goes back to just sort of the acceptance and understanding that tourism is what keeps Williamsburg going. It's our economic engine. It's very important to all of the businesses, the residents here in the city, and it's our primary means of revenue. And we've seen not only that revenues have flattened and expenses continue to rise, but also that tourism trends have expanded greatly. Karen's presentation from the Chamber Tourism Alliance on Monday highlighted so many things that, you know, 40 years ago when I first got into my first hospitality job hadn't even been thought of. Your weddings were held at a church and you had your reception afterwards. You didn't have destination weddings or bachelorette, you know, parties here and there. So those and the tasting trail and so many things that have come out and been present in Williamsburg that we take advantage of just over the past few years. The Fun Fest, the Winter Jazz Festival, we were at Summer Breeze last night and the great band and she mentioned she's going to be here for the Big Bluesy and Second Sundays. And a lot of different things that are generating new ways that people travel and experience tourism. But it's like, okay, so how can we help move that along and broaden our product and provide support to our tourism professionals, to the Chamber and to our primary driver Colonial Williamsburg? How can we, like Bush Gardens does, do always look at new things and expand interest and more people coming and extended stays? And so we looked at an opportunity to create transparency and to maintain integrity of tourism funds and to basically create sort of a lockbox apparatus that we could keep those funds in one place to fund tourism projects, which benefit residents as well as our visitors. We all know that. And so we looked at various cities and how they do a modeling and came up with a Tourism Development Fund. And in actuality, we've always been having a Tourism Development Fund once we started collecting hospitality and hotel taxes, but at that point, they just went into the general fund then and seemed to get melded with other expenses and revenues. And so this way, it's to keep it there. And cities were chosen for comparison based on sort of the, you know, on our market. It's hard to find someone exactly like Williamsburg. We're extremely unique both with our size and with what we offer tourists. But we looked at cities, as you all have heard before, of cities that people would consider when they're also looking at Williamsburg, whether it be Asheville and with, which has Biltmore and then also their burgeoning food and beverage departments. And then Virginia Beach and Charleston and Nashville. And so we looked at how they were doing things and came up with this model. And we just wanted to have a way that we could, as I say, sort of corral the funds and then through a grant process, take advantage of our professionals, private entrepreneurs, new and innovative ways that the funds could be used for their current tourist projects, ones that have been on the books for a long time that haven't been able to, been completed and then moved forward with some new things. And that list of projects has been provided and as you all have seen it, sort of covers the gamut. And so then it's like, in our various presentations, how do we get there? So we've talked about real estate taxes and that was brought up by some people as to, let's look at real estate taxes. And someone pointed out, you know, 10 cents to the real estate rate that we have now would generate $1.8 million. But I think it's forgotten that that 10 cents would add 18% to someone's bill, whether it be your home, a restaurant or a hotel. So it's fairly significant. And if and when real estate taxes are looked at to be raised, that'll be part of the budget process. And we'll go to those things that are near and dear to all of us as far as schools and police and other core service needs. And then someone said, well, how about looking at reducing expenses? And when you look at our budget from last year to this year, we had a very nominal increase, think of it as less than 1.5%, with the majority of those increases in the schools, 43%, I think, and 17% to the police department, very important to all of us. And at the same time, we cut expenses both on things that we weren't able to do, projects that were delayed, requests that we were not able to provide for funding to outside agencies. And also, we weren't able to even fulfill the school's funding request. So as you know, we've looked at other things and over the past four months, we've tried to come to some compromises. And first, we looked at, one thing we've looked at is an admissions tax. We started off with 7%. We listened to people and how that might burden, so we compromised to a 3.5%. And I think that, you know, a lot has been said as to how much that will impact. And so I've done a little figuring and on a $25 ticket, that's an 87-cent increase. I know the Movie Tavern has been here a number of times and talked about how it would impact their business. And one thing you may not know is that you are less expensive than Regal Theater. And so adding a 3.5% increase to a Movie Tavern ticket would be a difference of 18 cents between the experience that you get at the Movie Tavern and what you would get at Regal in Newtown. And also, I think that in our buy-ittoday, buy-it-online convenience, we sort of forget about those service charges that we all willingly pay and how much percentage that is. If you buy a movie or if you go to a show or anything like that, if you go to a baseball game, there's always a service fee in there. And doing some comparison, those service fees can run from 11% to 20%, but we feel it's important and many times we do that without a blink of an eye. And many times now, that's the only way you can even purchase a ticket to a show or something. And so admissions, we've cut our original proposal in half. And so then we looked at lodging and as you all know, we went from a $2 collection for Wadmac to a 2%. It's what was originally on the table. It was felt that by going to 2% that would, over the years and even some years, add additional money to Wadmac. I think the figure was up to $200,000. But some felt that the $2 to 2% wasn't really enough buy-in for the hotels. So I want to thank the Hotel Motel Association and various hotel owners who have agreed to go to a 3% increase. So that will add 1% of hotel sales to the TDF for about $660,000, I think. So that's something that we heard repeatedly and they've worked with us and council members have felt that that's a good way to go. On the meals, we proposed a 2% increase to the current rate. And again, hearing from the restaurateurs and comparing to different cities in Virginia, we've suggested a 1.5% increase instead of the 2% increase. And looking at where we are in this area, it makes us very competitive. Yes, James City County is currently at 5%, but Newport News is 7.5%. Hampton is 7.5%. Norfolk, 6.5%. And a couple of places I recently visited and have some familiarity with, I was in Abington and if you all have heard of the Virginia Creeper, you know that that's where their home is and a big tourism destination. They only have 8,000 people, but their meals tag... They only have 8,000 people, but their meals tax is 7%. Harrisonburg, where I grew up, Shenandoah Valley, not really a tourist area, but sort of growing particularly in biking. And home of James Madison has a 6.5% meals tax and a 5% admissions tax. And so Marvin and the city staff have been kind enough to provide a lot of information to us on the tax. And we feel that this puts us in the average and that it will not create a burden. And again, to sort of put it into perspective, going out for a 50-meal dinner with a 1.5% increase to what the tax would be an increase of 83 cents on your bill. So those are the three different components that we've looked at, the admissions, the lodging, and the meals tax. And I just want to thank everyone for their support and consideration. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Councilwoman Ramsey, you did a great job. You know, I think she clearly communicated sentiments that I have. And so thank you for taking the time to do that. This has been a long process, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the people that have called me, reached out to me, emails. We read them all. I read them all. And there's been lots of good points made on both sides of the conversation. Lots of people supporting this, and there's lots of people that are opposed to it. Taxes are not easy. None of us diminish the impact the tax have. But I think for me, you know, doing this tax helps us move this destination forward in a way that we haven't done heretofore, and that's make investment in infrastructure. It's, you know, we've talked about and studied and researched and seen reports, you know, dating back to, you know, 2004, when we did the Convention Feasibility Center study. We had a vision task force that looked at the destination. The HTC did an economic development, or economic diversification report. And the Alliance did a, as Karen Reed just mentioned last month, did a strategic plan that identified some projects that needed to be done. These things all take money. And so what we're doing is we're providing that vehicle to help facilitate these types of investments that will supplement what we're doing today in tourism promotion. And so again, I think to Councilwoman Ramsey's point, you know, hearing you, we've decided to compromise on all these taxes. And I think we've come up with a fair solution to some of the discussions that we've heard. And again, I'll be the first one to say that taxes do impact us. But if we can use those taxes in ways that generate more visitation for all the businesses, I think we've done a good job.
Thank you. Just really quick first, you mentioned James City County meals tax. You said 5%, but they're actually 4%, right, Mr. City Manager?
Correct. Counties are limited at 4%.
Okay, so they would be lower.
We're at 5%, right?
Right. Just wanted to make sure that that was the correct info out there. Let me first off say thank you to everybody just joining with my colleagues and thanking you for providing your input. Received emails, phone calls, text messages, Facebook messages, pigeon mail. But I think ultimately, a lot of that input has been very valuable. So I greatly appreciate the citizens, our stakeholders from all of our tourism industries for providing their input. And there's been a lot of good arguments, like Councilman Pond said, on both sides, support and oppose. I think ultimately, when I'm evaluating this proposal, the philosophical intent is sound. Infrastructure investment is sound. And that's something the city has done in terms of its core services. We just passed a resolution or ordinance to transfer funds for a Monticello Avenue project, which is very important for our redevelopment purposes. You know, that's something that we've done, and that's a mission that we will continue to strive to do. But ultimately, I think what comes down to are three points. One, I would like to see a long-term spending plan in terms of a tentative list of projects that we could move forward with that kind of provides us highly specific direction for the Tourism Development Fund. Right now, I think we're at a stage where we're still in that conversation with the conceptual aspects of it. But with the long-term spending plan, it really sets a vision forward. So in terms of vision right now, there are a lot and many ways we can use this fund. One, you know, one certain sect of school thought thinks they can use it for greater marketing funds, which could be, is an eligible use for the TDF. For others, some have expressed using it primarily as a debt service fund to borrow maybe $50 million to do big projects, which is awesome if it definitely can prove that it brings that, drives that visitation forward, increases patronage to our restaurants, and affects our tourism industry in a beneficial way. And others, we've talked about, expressed interest of using it as a way to accomplish our GIOs, which, again, I understand, but the philosophical intent, right now, with our operating budget, with our general fund, increasing operational costs are dwindling resources that we can otherwise use to fulfill our GIOs projects. That's totally understandable. But I think with all these varied ideas of what we want to see the TDF, I think it's important to set that in stone and drive that conversation forward. I think having a long-term spending plan in terms of what we want to use, how are we going to use it, we can drive that conversation with the public because we all have ideas about this. Tourism stakeholders talk about this all the time. And I've received a lot of input from it, and I'm keenly aware of it. And I'm sure folks will be aware of it as well. I've spoken with citizens who have expressed that they don't like the increase in taxes, but what are you going to really use this for? And I think by doing this before adoption, I think that really drives the conversation in a more productive way that allows us to get that buy-in from our stakeholders, which includes our citizens. My second point is, I think there's been a lack of stakeholder buy-in. Besides the lodging industry, the Hotel Motel Association, I commend you for your leadership on it. I think the problem, the issue of increasing occupancy rates is definitely a problem for the city. But I think when I look to the meals tax and for the admissions tax, what I saw, you know, I've contacted officials from New York upon the suggestion from a constituent and from Virginia Beach. For example, they've had that buy-in. The lodging industry came up to them and said, please, we would love to see an increase in the occupancy rates, please raise our taxes. And they wouldn't have done that without, you know, without the buy-in of other industries at play. And right now, what I've seen with the Restaurant Association at least, they haven't had that buy-in. CW was publicly opposed to this as well. They'll be one of the stakeholders mainly affected by the admissions tax specifically, Movie Tavern, Ripley's, et cetera. So I think we need to really get that stakeholder buy-in because if they can't buy into this vision, or whatever vision we may be touting, it's certainly a problem for me to consider approving or affirming this fund. And then finally, I think we need to strive to have that meaningful regional approach. We are a unique destination, and we're a very unique city, but our fates are tied with James City County, York County. We succeed well when we do well together. And maybe the political aspect, the political realities of the makeup for James City Counties and York Counties Board Supervisors will prevent that. But I haven't really seen any meaningful discussions driven, whether that's holding a joint Board of Supervisors meetings among the three localities besides the historic Triangle Collaborative, which is only features a certain amount of people in that conversation. We can drive that conversation through. I think we can still take that leadership position as well. And one last thing I forgot to mention in terms of the buy-in with the vision and the long-term spending plan for Virginia Beach, their tip funding, the Tourism Investment Fund program, excuse me, they tie that to the sportsplex funding, public funding option. They've had these plans and these visions moving forward of maybe an idea of how can we find a way to get this funded? And later on, the sportsplex being publicly funded became privatized fully later on on City Council. So with all these considerations in mind, I think also with the lack of vision, you know, it's a difficult thing to talk about with the sunset clause. It's something that's been brought up with many, many times. But again, we don't know the vision of it because if we're going to use this program primarily as a debt service to borrow money, how are you really going to set that sunset clause? And we've had that conversation with the DASN as well. So I think it's just with the idea of how are we going to be able to accomplish this from five to 10 years, but we don't really know what the vision may be. We don't have the spending plan in place. I'm a little skeptical at how this moving forward could really work. And I hope that what we can do and aspire to is really unite the different silos of our tourism industry, have those blunt, hard conversations of what to drive forward, a strategy driving forward with this, and hopefully, we can accomplish it through that aspect. So thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right. So I need to take a little time to kind of respond to some comment that has been made since our last meeting. So first off, a Beacon Hill Institute study was cited. So did a little Googling on Beacon Hill. Have other studies against raising wages? Why states should spend less on education? Why teachers should be paid less? Why social security should be privatized? How the theory of climate change is flawed? And why we should not invest in renewable energy? With a pedigree like this, I can't consider that a credible source. Second, short of engaging in a semester-long comparative local government tax class to an attempt, an apples-to-apples comparison of tax structures from state to state on a given subject is difficult and rife for misinterpretation. As an example, yes, New York City does not have a meals tax. Yes, their total sales tax is 8.85%, but their property tax is 10% of the total assessed value of a given property. On top of that, their state income tax is astronomical. And in addition, that state retains and remits much different portions of its taxes back to the localities. Because of this and multiple other factors, it's impossible to independently compare New York City tax rates or any other city outside Virginia with the city of Williamsburg. In this instance, the only fair comparison is between cities in Virginia, as they're the only ones operating under the same conditions as the city. To that end, Weldon Cooper Center at UVA provides data on meal tax rates. This data indicates that at Williamsburg's current meal tax rate of 5%, only seven of 38 Virginia cities have a lower rate. At 6%, 14 cities still have a higher rate. At 7%, five Virginia cities still have a higher rate than the city of Williamsburg, two of which are Hampton and Newport News, both of which are subject to a 6% sales tax for an effective rate of 13.5%. It is simply incorrect to assert that Williamsburg might have the highest tax rate on meals in this country when we don't even have the highest tax rate in our region. Although Newport News was omitted from recent conversations within the restaurant industry, it can provide an example of how increases in meals tax affect overall meals sales. Per a statement from their finance department, "Since enacting a 7.5% meals tax in 2012, which went effect in 2013, the city of Newport News has seen no decrease in the demand for meals, and the line item revenue has exceeded the budget projections each year." This data point alone makes me comfortable with increasing the tax on meals. Because Williamsburg prides itself on history, I thought it might be helpful to review some from our recent past. In the spring of '98, then-city manager Jack Tuttle presented a budget to City Council recommending a slight increase in utility taxes, with all other major sources of revenue being held constant. At that time, council was made up of Mayor Granger, Gene Zidler, Chip Hoglin, Channing Hall, and George Janakis. Council ultimately decided against increasing the utility taxes. Instead, at the May Budget Retreat Work Session, Mr. Hoglin proposed raising the room and meals taxes from 4% to 5%, which is where we stand today. The budget passed on the following Thursday without a tax increase of any kind. At that same meeting, a public hearing was set for July to discuss an increase in rooms and meals taxes. The matter was debated at the July meeting, where significant data was presented on the topic by staff that compared rates in Williamsburg to other localities across the state. Council ultimately decided to table the matter until the August meeting, where an additional 1% was added to the room and meal tax. The tax was to be implemented on January 1st of 1999. At that time, Colonial Williamsburg expressed opposition to the tax, as did the Chamber of Commerce, the CVB, and the Hotel Association. Their arguments were exactly the same as some of those organizations have asserted in 2017. This will hurt demand. You're driving up the cost to the consumer. Delay and seek additional information. This is an undue burden on city businesses. They also noted that the city needed to do more to invest in tourism, both in product and marketing. And if the tax was to be implemented, it needed to be directed towards strengthening tourist demand. Council agreed to work with the industry on that issue. As an aside, since 1998, total meals sales in the city has increased by 46%. By January '99, the industry had solidified around the idea that the revenue from rooms and meals needed to be directed to promoting and selling meals and rooms. Other destinations were doing it, and in a much bigger way than Williamsburg. In a January 15th of 1999 letter signed by the Chamber of Commerce, the Hotel Motel Association, the CVB, and Colonial Williamsburg, it was noted that other major tourism cities in the US reinvest a higher percentage of tourism revenues into tourism. East Coast destinations like Gatlinburg reinvested 115%. Asheville, in 1998, invested 100% of tourism revenues. Myrtle Beach, 79%. Our neighbor, Richmond, 54%. Virginia Beach, 47%. I'll remind you, this is all '98-'99. They encourage the city leadership to follow that same model, use a higher percentage of tourism dollars to bring tourists here. Mayor Zidler, who had become mayor in July of '99, responded to this letter. A portion of her response is as follows. "I think it's fair to say, however, that we interpret differently what it means to invest in tourism. From the city's perspective, it was impossible to distinguish between the benefit derived by the tourism industry as opposed to that derived to the city at large, from core services such as police protection, fire protection, emergency medical service, street maintenance, park and landscape maintenance, planning and zoning, education, libraries, transportation, et cetera." From this point forward, the additional meals and room taxes went into the general fund, spreading themselves among things like new curb and gutter, glossy chamber commerce pamphlets, children on school buses, paint on crosswalks, new police and fire equipment, and more than a few seconds of TV commercials. Today, we continue to spend far less on tourism investments than other destinations. We can no longer afford to do this. Our stakeholders saw this more than 20 years ago, and inaction now means these issues will continue for the foreseeable future, and we will continue to fall behind as a great place to live and to visit. I don't want to wait another 20 years to make that type of investment in true tourism-related projects. I'm ready to act. Our city attorney tallied up the total number of times we've met on this topic has now reached 12. I believe Ms. Ramsey kind of articulated a blend of taxes that I can get behind. I also understand that we only advertised that we would be considering a 2% increase in meals taxes. So if we are to go to three, we have two options. Excuse me, lodging taxes. If we are to go to three, that will have to occur at a later date. Understood.
So if we could do two and then advertise and do an additional one?
1%. I think that's the best way. Also, you know, the general discussion has been that we begin to collect these taxes in July of 2018. I think there's at least a consensus around that.
It allows for a lot of things to happen.
Sure.
Continue conversation about a regional approach to raising funds in a different manner, whatever they may be. And I think this body stands ready and willing to have that conversation. And I'm confident that our jurisdictions, James City County, York County, our neighbors, are willing to begin that conversation if they haven't already. And so I think that that has to be part of our strategic plan moving forward. We have the General Assembly Session coming up in January, which is, you know, gives us, you know, four or five months to kind of assemble locally, create a legislative agenda that we can present to our state legislators and see what happens. And if something does get signed into law that's, you know, mutually acceptable before July, implementation of this tax, then, you know, this council will accept, you know, making some changes.
And we're going to, we're going to put forth every effort to make sure that happens. But... But we also aren't going to let failure of that effort delay continued investment. That's what I like about the way this is set up.
Just a quick question with the compromise in the funding. What does that yield in total? Have we tallied that up? Just wanted to be clear.
3.4.
3.4.
After the administrative fees.
Sure, to 10% administrative fees. So, and also the wide Mac contribution. And this would strike out the $2 tax from the lodging. Okay. Mr. City Manager, in terms of that pot of money, would that be able to still fulfill policy goals from a 5- to 10-year basis?
Correct. That's more than the original staff recommendation.
Can you just give a real quick recap on how you determined how this amount of money would be able to fulfill commitments in a 5- to 10-year period?
To cost estimates on the projects that we received from our community partners and stakeholders, as well as the GIO projects. Presented that to council in a five-year plan at your January budget work session, showing you what could be funded and could not be funded within that five-year window, and using also to be able to match to grants and other funds.
Right.
And in addition, if you look out to that 10-year window, you're able to accomplish more than what was originally presented. It also contemplated if larger projects coming up that review committee and council could contemplate using part of that funding for debt service for larger project to allow that to happen, but still having continual funding moving forward to accomplish other goals.
So, just to be clear, we had, you presented a plan at our retreat of an idea, and we had a different funding model back then, because that was just way beyond preliminary discussions at that point about the Tourism Development Fund. But that is not the plan that we are abiding by with this TDF.
Right.
We're just adopting it. We're adopting the new taxes to have the pot of money so we can move forward with accomplishing policy goals.
Anytime council wants to achieve an outcome, you need to also set the resources to achieve that outcome. Staff has consistently reported somewhere between the upper twos to low fours would achieve varying levels of those outcomes, depending on the projects that get submitted. We have an idea of projects of interest out there now. One thing we learned from Asheville is sometimes those projects aren't the applications you get. Sometimes you spur creative interest in the private sector and your nonprofit sector that you weren't, didn't realize were going to come in, and they have a better impact on visitation than what you had thought. And so, you know, we can demonstrate that it can achieve a certain level of projects, a number of projects over a time period, depending on what comes in.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd move that city council approve proposed Resolution Number 12-17-12, a resolution to establish a special revenue fund or program policy for the Tourism Development Fund.
Second.
Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
No.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Do we have another motion? We're going to have to modify this a bit.
Yeah, so this is, okay, if I can. So, I move that city council approve proposed Ordinance 17-09, an ordinance amending Section 18-237 of Article 2 and Section 18-271, 18-272, and 18-273 of Article 8 of Chapter 18 of the City Code to increase the levy for transient lodging tax to 7% and prepared food and beverage tax to 6.5% and to amend the process of the collection and payment of taxes to the Williamsburg Area Destination Marketing Committee and provide for an effective date of July 1, 2018.
Second. Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
No.
Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye. And in that, we ask staff to come back with additional 1% for September of, for next month, correct?
Yeah.
Understood.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that city council approve proposed Ordinance 17-10, an ordinance to add Article 7 admission tax to Chapter 18 of the City Code and levy admission tax in the amount of 3.5% and provide for an effective date of July 1, 2018. 12, I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
No.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Abstain.
And Ms. Ramsey.
Aye. Is there yet another one?
Yes, number four.
If I can remind council, since the effective date is July 1st, there is no budget amendment to fiscal year 18 budget, so the staff recommendation would be to deny this item, because there's no longer a need to amend the current year budget.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to deny proposed Resolution Number 17-08.
Second.
Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
No.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Oh, wait, sorry. Aye. I meant aye. Is that within Robert's rules? Okay, sorry.
Abstain.
Can we go back to that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to new business. We have one item for consideration, and it is appointments to boards and commissions.
I do have that here somewhere, I promise. Here we go. Move that effective immediately city council appoint Christopher Garies to the Williamsburg Regional Library Board trustees for a term to expire June 30th, 2019. Second.
Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Garies. This takes us to the last item on the schedule, which is open forum. I have one speaker's card. Is Mr. Shelley still here? Well, we'll come back to him. Oh, there he is. Is it Mr. Shelley?
Thank you. I'm Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. I wish to thank staff for providing me information last month regarding an issue for which I've been seeking a response. This is my eighth appearance this year, speaking in open forum. I've spoken in open forum many times over the past few years, mostly my requests have gone unanswered. Persistence is my only option. When I spoke in January, I had a high hopes that under your leadership, Mayor, citizens would be guaranteed that they could expect prompt responses to their concerns. I congratulated you on what I considered your well-deserved selection as to be our mayor. My optimism was such that I thought that my appearances at these meetings were soon to come to an end. For those who might have an interest in my previous appearances this year, they are easily accessible on the city website or in brief summary in our minutes. This is the reason that we keep records. The issue of concern to me was nothing extraordinary. I simply wanted to know why a previous council of which you were a part did not provide legally mandated minutes. Over the course of seven months, my presentations went from hopeful and laudatory to annoyance that I wasn't responded to, to finally outright resentment that my very legitimate concerns were not addressed. I clearly articulated that it didn't matter how I could be contacted, either by a response here in open forum, by mail, by telephone, by email, or knocking my door. To repeatedly not respond was not an option. I think that you and I both agree that antagonistic relationships between elected officials and their constituents is not only unproductive, it promotes cynicism and distrust in our leaders and our system of self-governance. Time has come for a reset. It has been suggested that those who are criticized tend to become defensive. I know a little bit about being attacked. In spite of the fact that most of my appearances over the years have been on behalf of others, whether supporting students who lost their right to vote, or challenging misguided city policy regarding the 110 Harrison fiasco, or speaking on behalf of those who requested that I advocate for them, I have been the target of retaliation. I've been attacked by the city on the front page of the Virginia Gazette. I have been last worded. In the Daily Press, a former official referred to me as a charlatan. That had to do with my position that William and Mary students had the right to vote in this town. State Board of Elections subsequently affirmed my position. Our former mayor has responded to my appearances with a sarcastic "Always nice to see you," or "Thank me for my fantasy world." But he wouldn't address the issues that I brought before him. The former city manager once lambasted me in open forum with an emotional five-minute tirade, choosing to attack rather than address an issue for which I was advocating on someone else's behalf. The former city manager also publicly proclaimed that there are simple administrative remedies to my concerns, and that he would be happy to meet with me and discuss them in his office. I took him up on his offer, but when we met, he refused to discuss anything. I filed a complaint with the council immediately after that incident. And there was also an uncalled-for personal attack on me at one meeting by the then-vice mayor, whose loss of composure was so outrageous that emerited headlines in the Virginia Gazette. I'm not referring to a physical assault, but a totally unwarranted response when I spoke of students' place in the community. These incidents are in the past. It is time to move forward. We cannot move forward without addressing and correcting mistakes from the past. I look forward to living in a town that has a city council dedicated to honest, open, and transparent government. This is how trust and respect is established. But we need to hear from you, either in word or in deed, assurance that from this point forward, all citizens will be guaranteed that their concerns will be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Would anybody else like to address council? Sure, Dr. Cranby.
David Cranby, 201 Harrison. Well, I just thought this ought to end in some kind of a positive thought from the outside audience. My general feeling is that the restaurants, at least the ones I ate at, where I eat probably three to four times a week, a month, I mean, I'll be eating out again tonight, ate out last Saturday, ate out the Saturday before that, are just wanting some kind of an equitable skin in the game, as the phrase might be. They aren't opposed to raising money to go out and make a stronger city. I also think the lodging people, I don't have direct contact with it, but I believe and trust and confidence in you, Doug, and you represent and communicate with them, and I think they are for that too. Nobody wants to pay more taxes in one sense, but we all have this goal. And this procedure, you spend a lot of time figuring out how to build it based on other cities, and it's solid based on experience of others. And the presentation you just made in great detail, Councilman Ramsey, and the responses that you gave, Scott, it's fantastic, extremely well-presented, extremely solid. And Doug, you've been the key here in many ways to bring what my good Fred, Bob Singley, was worried about, is kind of the two critical parts of our tourism business sort of not feeling so good about each other. But you, because of you, it's all come together. So, I think it's terrific. And with respect to the delay or waiting forever, I've been in faculty meetings, you know, on Phi Beta Chi, but the key discussion is that Adam haven't navel, or classic another expression, the chicken and the egg. We can't wait forever. And if you don't want to, and you need to have solid proposals if you're not going to vote for this. And you voted for it, and you're taking time until it's implemented, and there's other ways this whole thing might be washed out and through other revenue streams, where we actually are, the counties and so forth, we're all on the same team, and a lot of folks don't know about that potential. So, anyway, my simple statement is that I really appreciate what you've done. And I think we're a much more solid community because of the complex and at times contradictory and challenging, to put it mildly, discussion. I think when you go through this kind of experience, you come out much stronger. You as a council are much stronger as a team, and I think the communication with all the people who have been here has greatly strengthened our community. Obviously, we'd like to be smoother and done in slightly different ways, but we're there. And I believe in their hearts, you have the solid support of a vast majority of every single voter in Williamsburg. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cranby. Ma'am, would you like to?
My name is Diane Canestracy, and I'm a new member of this community. I'm very proud of it, because I think this community is fantastic. And by my accent, you probably can tell, I'm originally from New York, so I definitely know about taxes. I know about how raising, they go very fast. And my main concern was not so much the increase in the taxes, because they're very small percentages of the taxes, but my main concern was do not put the money in a general fund. That you absolutely need to learn. That I learned from years ago, I was involved in a town called Huntington, Long Island. That's where I'm originally from. A town similar to this, actually. And you just can't keep taking, putting money, if we're raising money or tax for a specific cause, my main concern is do not put it in a general fund. That's a lesson I hope you all learned, because that's where the money had gone to, that's where it was spent, and that's why we're in this situation. If this, if it wasn't in a general fund, we'd probably be fine right now financially. That's just my thought. So, that's a main concern that I have. I did hear a few things that, you know, you like to compare with different cities, and it was very smart that you didn't compare it with New York or Orlando or any other large city of this country, because we're not that. That's why I moved here, because we're not that type of city. I moved here because it's a lovely community. And I personally don't mind paying more taxes, probably many don't, but we always are concerned where that money is going to go, and that was pointed to, one of the councilmen had mentioned that, that we want a plan, that we want to know where our money is going. That's what we do at home. And when we do have to buy something, we need a plan, and we want to make sure it's going to the right place. I thank you for listening to me. I'm sorry I haven't come earlier to do a few more input, but you did a very nice job. You didn't increase it too much. I'm just hoping that it works out the best for the city, because I do love it here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes.
It should be right here.
Sure, he is 103 Williamsburg Avenue. It's more of a question, I guess, to Christina in regards to the noise issue, is I looked at the city codes and their decimal readings. at the City Codes and their decimal readings to justify noise being too bad. Are we at a point now is, is noise, how do you judge it? Because I think of the decimals, decimal for before six, after seven, and if something is over the level for any, you know, period of time, my problem initially was with the Williamsburg Lodge with their new heating system, the sauced wood shake my mother's house or CW's house where the windowspanes. And they finally brought in a sound team from Michigan and realized that the noise exceeded the limits of the city. So is it a staff member goes this out and listens? Oh, yeah, it's louder noise, or does he carry a decimal reader to go with the City Code?
Mr. Hughes, our police department has devices to measure the sound, and they measure it as described by our City Code on where they measure from and.
I was not aware of that, but there again, that was a question that needed to be addressed on what was and what wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Anybody else? Please, if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful.
My name is Daniel Lemire, and I, my address is 116 Holly Hills Drive, and, well, this really just, I might not have the greatest understanding of this tax or where the money's going to, but I think it would be really good if it went towards the tourist industry and to try and get more people to come to like the Colonial Williamsburg because from my understanding of the research I've done is that Colonial Williamsburg, right down the street, its income has been going down year after year, and, well, they've had to sell off some of their own assets to survive, and I'm not sure how I feel about this because I tend to take like a walk into the Colonial Williamsburg once a week, and even then, I just manage to learn new facts about history every time I go there. And I used to live up north in a historical area where eventually just all the historical buildings and such were no longer being taken care of and were torn down, but I don't want to see that happen here because this is one of the most important parts of American history. And Williamsburg used to be the capital of Virginia, so I just wanted to put all that out there.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else like to address counsel? Last call, seeing no one, we'll close the open forum. Do we have any items for closed session?
I don't believe.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I think you had three motions and a second. Mr. Trivit's marveling at your ability to record all this information, by the way. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey. Aye.